Lights on that end, okay. But we're up to streetlights.
Does the train station come out of tourism?
Uh-uh, no.
Can't we put the cleaning service in for tourism for the train station?
Why would we want to? Wouldn't there be more maintenance and building? Where does it come from now?
Maintenance of, I believe it's technically professional services line item in the metro parking lot fund, in the metro lot fund.
Is it a metro lot fund, so it's coming out of the parking fees?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
You okay?
Yeah, well, we're gonna get to that too, right?
Okay, right.
Thank you.
Sure. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Hey, this is the overtime for our tourism fund, i- is that for overtime for the the events we have that we pay for overtime, okay? And then I just have one other follow-up. Is the museum adding another project? Is that why they asked for a $500,000 increase, or what is that increase for? I mean, because we didn't get a list of what they are asking for for this year.
Uh, I believe their donation, uh, did we get that letter, Brad, or did it?
And we have supported them all along, I have no problems.
I'd have to go back and look at that.
It would be nice if we had a list on what programs they're gonna have up there this year.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. May I, may I do one other follow-up?
Yes.
Streetscape Committee, landscaping Streetscape Committee, you were at, if I'm not mistaken, budgeting $50,000, projected to spend $30,000?
So, so the actuals, it looks like they're projected to come out at $30,000, is that correct? Good number, sir?
So you go from 50 to 30?
Actual spend?
Well, historically, over the past, I'd say, five fiscal years, we always budget 50, and whatever gets spent, gets spent. I think we've, we've budgeted, or we've spent 50 maybe twice. Um, you can see that one number in there, uh, actual 2010, we spent 48. So that's why we put 50 in there to be safe, uh, if the projects dictate that money being spent.
Alright.
Okay, I see no further, oh, Mr. Mayor?
Question back to the employee salaries again. At one time, the administrative assistant for the manager was partially out of this fund, has that been removed, or is that still? And what also is the part-time employment?
A portion of the administrative assistant for the manager is not one of those two particular salaries. Um, and the part-time employment is the dialer ride bus drivers.
And then, uh, one other on a different subject, uh, the income from the brick sales for the Veterans More, I see you zeroed that out. So is the income accounted coming in somewhere and the expense going out for the bricks, or is that some other fund?
It's the tourism fund, um, however, since that's effectively money in, money out, we actually put it in a liability account, which is just on the balance sheet. Um, so we take the 50 or $100 in, and then when we get the bill, just pay it out of that same account. So it's the net, the net on the balance sheet, net zero.
Okay, we have a lot of more, a lot of other funds to go through.
One more.
Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley, this is your last one.
Alright, but the student essay contest, we aren't doing that anymore, or did you move that to a different account?
It's in there, in the, for the proposed for this, uh, this upcoming fiscal year.
I, I think probably the question, the question is, why did we skip this current year?
Yeah.
We did it this current year.
It's just not reflected.
I believe that was council direction last year, that we took that out when we were doing our cuts.
Geez, hopefully not.
I don't, alright.
Uh, we actually issued the checks.
Yeah, I mean.
I know I handed them out, this fiscal year.
I thought we did, I thought we did them.
Well, I think it was initially cut out, and then the council changed their minds mid-year.
Well, then you should have put that in there.
Okay, okay, let's, let's not talk on a turn. Okay, so actually, what do we need to fix at a budget amendment at some point? To, to fix a line item?
No, I, I'll go back and I'll look, and if we did pay them out, I'll just update the red column.
Okay.
Then, yeah, looking at the tourism fund, um, we wouldn't need a budget amendment for that, I'll just fix, fix my spreadsheet.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, uh, okay, so there's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund. I make it a motion to approve. The fund as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is the General Capital Projects Fund. Are there any questions, concerns, um, on this, uh, fund as presented? Alderman, please.
Page, uh, 165, we have the 175,000 on Irving Park Salt Creek Bridge. That was for the lights and the railing, I thought, we're not, uh, we weren't doing that.
I didn't realize it was turned down.
It was, at one point, it was 350,000.
Mr. Wilson, what's your recollection?
Um, the notes that the staff had was that that particular number, that was in the original proposed CIP, um, was not acceptable, but with the, the grant money, rolled into that, um, kind of the high watermark that you would be comfortable with was 175, so that's, that's what we plugged in. That's, I think, what Mr. Kramer's been kinda working off of as a guide going forward with that project.
How long do we have to spend that money? I'm gonna come unglued if we send money back, because we didn't make up our mind on a project. It's just, that's just not acceptable.
It has to be spent by this June. Um, since the last time we spoke about this, we found out that that price is, the 175 is still not enough to cover the project, so we have our lobbyists working on reallocating those funds, um, for another project potentially, to see if we can de-obligate it and use it for something more fiscally attainable.
Isn't that for any bridge?
No.
It's specifically for the Salt Creek Bridge?
Which is why the lobbyist is working on reallocating the funding. I should hear back on that within the next week or so, he assured me.
Because I thought at one point, we were trying to decide what bridge to use it on, the one on Elizabeth.
Well, there was some talk that it could be used over on the Elizabeth, uh, Bridge, but I, I think, I don't know if Baxter and Woodman wanted to comment on that, it really wasn't needed in that area for the sand blasting or painting in that area.
We're in the process right now of pulling together, um, the bridge inspections and, uh, taking a look at it and the condition. Uh, there's some new, new, um, uh, there is evidence of some additional deterioration on the bridge. We need to re-inspect it and take a look at what's going on.
Okay, so, we're in, at the end of March, April and May is what, we have two months to either have the lobbyist reallocate or redo, or to use this, and I don't know if I wanna take that bet that the lobbyist is gonna make a change for us. Uh, if we make Elizabeth look presentable, nice, maybe even a little decorative, is that 175 enough to do something impactful?
It's only 75, right?
The, what they're saying is that.
The grant was only for 75,000, so 100,000 was extra on top of the 75 that we already have for the grant. So we have 75,000 in free money, you wanted to put an extra 100,000 in trying to cover the cost of the whole project. So if we wanted to spend none of our own monies, it would be 75,000.
And is 75 enough to make a difference on Elizabeth Park Bridge? Clean it up, make it nice, and maybe even a little decorative?
On Elizabeth Park Bridge? Uh, I think we're waiting on that.
I, I thought I just heard that we were looking at that.
Well, we're, we're looking at the existing condition of the bridge, uh, right now. Um, there's some evidence of some deterioration on the bridge, and we need to evaluate it and see exactly what, you know, what, where it pans out right now.
So is 75,000 enough to make a difference on that bridge?
My guess is that, that, that would allow you to do something, um, to what extent, I couldn't answer that until, until I know that a little bit more, but, um, my guess is there, just putting $75,000 towards it, uh, would allow you to get some things accomplished, but not, not to the full extent.
Okay, thank you. And is 175, what can we get for 175? All of our current plans that we won after, nothing came in that much, uh, that low on the Irving Park Bridge, right? The lowest was what?
Uh, about, a little over 300,000, 325,000, between 310 and 325, depending on the railing pricing that we were getting.
I forgot, what was the largest component of the 300,000?
The railing. The pedestrian barrier between the existing sidewalk and the road surface needed to be a certain grade, and architecturally matched the bike bridge going over the top of current Irving Park Road. So the combination of those two, having a specially made railing and being a pedestrian barrier was the, was the largest expense. Second largest, um, expense was the eight lights that we wanted to put four on either side, north and south of the bridge. Um, we actually dropped that number to six and really didn't see a great reduction in the prices.
Okay, Alderman Cadala?
You know, there's two main components to this. I mean, would the lighting fit into that budget? And we can stay on course and stop worrying about whether a lobbyist is gonna be able to pull this off, and be able to start moving forward and get this money actually spent by June, so Alderman Winger doesn't become unglued. Because I don't wanna see that, I've seen it before, it's not, it's not pleasant.
Mr. Kramer?
What dollar figure are you speaking about, the 75,000 or the 100 plus the 75,000?
Alderman Cadala?
I don't know. Either of them. I mean, the 75 ideally, or some portion of the 100,000 in addition to the 75. And maybe it's only four lights, one on each corner. Something along the same lines of what we talked about and all wanted to do, rather than, you know, turning and doing a 180 at this point.
Mr. Kramer?
I think the lights were in the neighborhood of 175, that's why we were kinda thinking along that line, just to do the lights. Um, again, that, I believe that was in the six to eight light range, I didn't start going down in light quantities to four, so.
Alderman Cadala?
I think this council is still in general consensus to move forward with the other Prairie-style lighting that we've got going on. I mean, this seems like a real simple, easy-to-imagine tie-in to that, so I would, I'm not saying it's simple from a, from a purchase and construction point of view, but conceptually, this is gonna make sense with what we've already got going on. I would, I would push for that and move on to the next subject.
Right, like saying, no lights on the bridge, but do everything else, is that right?
No, I'm saying lights on the bridge, but nothing else.
But, but not the guardrails and all?
Not the guardrails, because they're gonna come in well over 175 anyway, we'll deal with that a little later.
So it's 100 some for the lights, and then another, how much are the lights and how much are the guardrail? Mr. Kramer?
I don't have the exact pricing in front of me. Um, I believe the lights in and of itself were 175,000, and that included the concrete repairs to the actual walking surface around there, and included the, um, electrical control cabinet, the mounting to the outside of both sides of the bridge. Um, and then the retaining wall was another 20, or, excuse me, 200,000 on top of that, 175,000 on top of that.
Okay, now, do we need the retaining wall to do the lights?
We may need the retaining wall in order to get it approved by IDOT as a pedestrian bridge. Again, I think it would be best if I had Strand come in who's been working on it and give you some alternatives, um, and perhaps they can break that out better.
Okay, because, yeah, I would say so, and can it either be at the very next committee meeting, or even council, if the mayor will allow it, but just something to, to hear it out, so we can make decision and, and have it spent by June? What is it, June 1st or June 30th?
15th.
Uh, the last day of June, end of the month.
Okay, 'cause along the lines of what Alderman Cadala said, you know, okay, yeah, lights are good, and I agree, let's do the lights first, but if we need the wall to do the lights, then let's do the wall and get this thing started. And the wall will be a tremendous improvement in itself, it'll be ornamental, it'll give it a little downtown charm, so let's get one of these done. Thank you. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Alright, let's back up. I agree with you 100% on it, on moving that money, but first all, there's no way in the world we are going to be able to have it all together by June unless they give us extension on that, because here's the thing. You gotta engineer it, which engineer costs ain't in here yet, to engineer to do those lights, okay? You have to award a contract in the next two months to spend the money. I don't think it's gonna be ready, because it has to be engineered. Then you need, you know how IDOT drags her feet with projects, and until IDOT approves it, we aren't gonna get the blessing on it, because IDOT's gonna be the final word, because it ain't our bridge. Face it, guys, it is not our bridge. I'm in favor of doing it, no doubt about it. But those are issues that we're gonna face by spending that money that quick. Unless we get extension from the lobbyist, or whoever gave us that, did that grant come from Dennis? And, and we get Dennis approval, a letter from them, that we can expand that grant money for the longer time, you ain't gonna make that deadline regardless of how you look at it. Because IDOT has to approve it, and we know how IDOT works, they can't plow their Irving Park Road Street. You know, so let's, let's make really sense up here if that's, and you know what, I'm not trying to kill this project, believe me. But I don't see us spending 60,000 or 75,000 dollars in that time span, have everything in place. It's going to take, I'll ask the engineer, how long does it take to engineer it?
Uh, thanks, my guess is, uh, if you get somebody on top of it tomorrow, it would take you at least a couple of weeks to put it together, permitting would be another month. Um, bidding would be another month, then procurement of contracts, that would be another month, so.
You ain't gonna make it.
So you're looking at probably about three months before you can, you know, try to spend that kinda money, um, at a lump sum, it would be probably the most advantageous. So, uh, it would, my guess would be three months at the, at the quickest.
That's without IDOT approving too?
That would be including IDOT, one month for IDOT.
So, so my recommendation is, I would ask staff to go back and talk to Dennis that got that grant for us, and ask for extension. Because, let's face it, guys, we ain't gonna make it. We are not gonna make it by June, on this project, we are not.
And then, uh, Mr. Kramer, in terms of engineering, uh, or the whole process, is it shorter if we do Elizabeth Bridge?
I don't know the full understanding of the grant as far as, does it have to be a beautification? If it says Salt Creek Bridge improvements, then I think it has to be for Salt Creek and not for Elizabeth Park Bridge.
But isn't that, what, isn't that Salt Creek that goes through there? It is. It goes right under there. It's a bridge over Salt Creek.
I'm incorrect then, then it sounds like it can. Um, can that work be done? Can we get the bridge painted by that, and the other warranty work that Mr. Stefan spoke of, and that's part of the bridge? I'm gonna have to lean back to him and hand him the mic again.
Um, that's difficult to say, but then you can, uh, most likely, you'd wanna go with some type of design build, you know, agreement to, to get it designed and constructed, you know, to use those funds. Um, that would probably be the, uh, one of the avenues that you may wanna look at.
I still would rather, it, I'm gonna make one comment, and then I'll call on you, Mr. Mayor. I still would like to make a decision tonight, let's move forward as quick as possible and get this thing done if we're, you know, um, three-fourths of the way done on June 1st. I mean, I, I think that an extension is a little bit easier to argue it, because the project's half done. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Wouldn't a simple solution just be to buy the lights out of the 75,000, buy all your fixtures?
It's a good suggestion, I like that. I'm liking that. Or buy the railing, or buy something, yeah.
I could solve the problem.
Okay, well, just one moment, please, while, while I answer, and then I'll call on you, Mr. Kramer.
I believe the lights were in the neighborhood, and don't quote me on this, $100,000.
I think, I'd be more than happy to, you know, I, I think we should take the other 25 out of what we were gonna spend 100 on, then we spend the rest.
They've expended the money, there's no problem. Won't be rescinded once it's spent.
I can, uh, talk with the vendors that we spoke with and find out the pricing on the lights, and I can bring it to you at the next meeting.
And, and then, can you also find out the price on the railing itself and delivery, purchase and delivery?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alderman calls?
Well, I shouldn't say nothing, I, I, 'cause I was, is, gonna joke a little bit, to break the monotony. Why don't you just, if it takes three months to do it, it'll only take a month and a half to do one side. So, do one side.
I like that.
That's to break the monotony.
Okay, um, Alderman Cadala?
Just, just real quick, put some checks and balances in here, make sure the lights that we're looking at are gonna be okay with IDOT, at least that they're not of the wrong height, brightness, glare, or whatever, to be, you know, I mean, these things aren't gonna be sitting real high, if I remember right, so I don't know if that's gonna be a problem for IDOT standards. If that passes and you can do that quick enough, yeah, I agree, let's get the lights.
Uh, Mr. Kramer?
I would still feel better bringing Strand back in, I'll have them get the pricing for you, they'll show you their preliminary design that they had approved by IDOT, and if you're happy with the cut sheets on those material, we can move forward with purchasing those items.
Mr. Mayor, are you willing to let them speak at city council, so we can get this thing moving?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer, can you have them come in at the first council meeting, so we can get this moving?
Absolutely, I'll try and get them here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, question on the alley program, does this include the, uh, this year, the alley behind Holy Ghost that's getting in really bad shape again?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Ray Wesley?
Sidewalk and curbs improvements? Am I reading this right, only 100,000?
Correct.
So does this mean our sidewalks are not falling apart, and our curbs are just perfect, and, because we had, we had 257,000. Now you're bringing it down to 100, and, and I got a lot of curbs that need to be replaced.
The, uh, the reason that number was so high last year was due to the Oak Street sidewalks, or Oak Avenue, I apologize, with the installation of those sidewalks, and so, since there's not a entire street that's being done, that 100,000 is for square replacements and, and, uh, just kinda the routine, uh, replacement program. Uh, squares that have been identified, curbs have been identified, but that extra 150,000 dollars, uh, last year was for, uh, for Oak.
Okay. Could I go on, madam?
Yes, please.
You went, you're asking for 160,000 for improvements of, um, City Hall, could you give me an example of what's the difference from 80 to 160? And when you're looking for that, I take it, the, uh, this is probably for Mr. Kramer, that, uh, we're working on getting the sidewalk fixed out in front of City Hall here, taking those bricks out?
To that question, correct, I've already spoken, Mr. Kramer, I know he's, I can let him speak, but you're looking into that right now, correct? No, the pavers. Yes, looking into that right now.
I hope to have that done very soon.
Correct. Um, last year, the 80,000 was for the, the, uh, I'll fix or put another, uh, layer on the roof, uh, that actually was just bid on Tuesday. Um, and this year, so it was only just the one project for City Hall last year. Uh, this coming fiscal year for City Hall, there's four projects. One of which is the pavers that, um, we're pushing ahead sooner.
We're going from pavers to concrete, correct?
He's shaking his head, yes.
Okay.
Uh, fire suppression system for the server rooms, so that if the building should catch on fire, the servers are protected. Access control system, so we can track, uh, upgrades from keys to fobs, so we can track who's actually going in and out of different areas of the building, uh, particularly on the, on the police department side, and, uh, we're upgrading the lighting fixtures to be green.
Okay. You said, uh, servers, talking computer servers?
Correct, the computer servers, yes. Trying to put a suppression system in the room should the fire get into either of the server rooms that we have. Um, I think it's a powder system would come down and put the fire out, so that the city's data would be protected in the case of a fire.
Okay. Alright.
Alderman Police?
Yeah, I'm sorry to bring this up again, the only, I don't have a problem with, with this, except for the deck, the decorative streetlights, 335,000 in this economy, I think we should hold off.
I wanna make a note of the, uh, ending projected fund balance, if we keep all the numbers in there as is, and there's a little under a million.
List your motion?
I was just making a note of something, I'm gonna call on Alderman, uh, Eugene Wesley, and then I'll look for someone to make a motion. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I, I, I have a couple here. The sidewalk, um, and curb improvement. Now, last week, we submitted a, um, for a grant, for a sidewalk on Edgewood. Now, if we get approval for that grant, I don't know how long it takes, it might, we might get by the end of this year, I don't know how long it takes. The problem is, we do not, we are committed, with that paperwork that we submitted, we are committed. Correct me if I'm wrong, it was at 60, a little over 60,000? Alright.
I apologize, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, uh, it was a bit more than that, um, it was around 70 to 80,000, if, if I recall correctly.
Okay, so, my question here, if that is approved, and we get that grant money that we sat here and we approved for the, to move forward, that grant, are we gonna have to up this sidewalk account then? Should we up that now, even though, say, we don't get the grant, it's, it's, long it's in there, and if we don't get the grant, we don't move forward with that project, but if we do, should we not increase that to cover our 69 or whatever, 70,000 dollars that we need for that grant?
Mr. Stefan?
Uh, the CMAC grant that we applied for is 80/20 split, and, uh, if I recall correctly, uh, we will not find out whether we receive that grant, and probably until October, uh, October, November, before we have an inkling whether we will receive that grant. Um, and then after that, it will probably be January, February, before we start seeing, uh, have the potential of seeing any money, um, become available. So it, it won't be, uh, until, most likely, your next fiscal year before you can move forward.
I just wanna make sure that, if that four comes, I just want council to know that if that project comes back sooner, that we have to count for another 70, 80,000 dollars for that sidewalk, you know, we committed to that, because that's what we put on our grant that week.
Is that our 20%?
That's our 20. That was our 20, but, I, I wanna say about 80,000.
I think that's correct.
And then the other, okay, I'm gonna bring this up. Uh, the dirt stockpile.
Yeah.
It's not in here.
No, it, it is in here, yes, it's okay. You're okay.
Oh, I'm just seeing, okay, that's fine.
You're okay. Okay, now, um, if, uh, and, and I will call the question, but Alderman Ray Wesley, did you look to make a motion? Alderman Ray Wesley, did you wanna make a motion, and then I will call the question?
Yes, I'll make a motion, to what dollar month is it? To approve as submitted.
Second, and the question, Alderman Lewitin?
I wanna pick up on Eugene Wesley's comment. We only have to match the engineering the first year, because we're receiving it late in the year. So we only have to match about, I think it's, uh, under 20,000. I had the figures with me, um, well, last week. I had the figures with me last week. It was divided into two years, the engineering in one, and the construction in another. So of that money, only about twenty thousand would be in the current budget, and the other sixty would be in the following year's budget. So I think we should amend this to put it in like Eugene said. Have it here, if it's not spent, you move it to next year. If it is spent, you've got it budgeted, because you only have to budget engineering, right, Steve?
Mr. Stefan?
That is correct. At this point, it would just be the engineering, since you won't find if you, find out if you received approval till the winter, you're not going to be constructing anything until the, you know, spring of 2012. So at that point, you wouldn't be expending any, any construction dollars until, most likely, you know, the next fiscal year.
So how much is the engineering for it, our twenty percent?
I think that will get you well into the engineering.
The amount that's in the budget right now?
Yes.
Okay, right, so it's just a few thousand?
Yes.
Okay, does that satisfy you, Alderman Lewitin?
As I understand what you just said, that the money is in here for the engineering.
That's my understanding.
Then we're all right.
Okay, good, okay. Anything else on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposition, motion carries. Next item is the equipment replacement fund. I'm going to make a motion to approve as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the commuter parking lot fund. Mr. Wilson?
Out of last week's meeting, and then earlier tonight, the land acquisition fund is going to have to be added into this document, and it's Fund Forty-Five, so technically, it would be after the equipment replacement fund, so we could bring it up at the end, but there's no expenditures for it, but at this point, I am going to have to create an income statement for it and show the fifteen thousand dollars coming into it. Like I said, currently, there's no expenditures, but we are going to have to generate a new fund for that, add that sheet in, so if you deem it appropriate, we should probably just conceptually agree that the land acquisition fund is being reestablished with initial revenues of fifteen thousand dollars, ten thousand from the general fund via transfer, and five thousand from the Harris Bank money.
Okay, so, can you point to me where you're at?
Well, it's not here right now.
So you have to add that into which fund here?
It would be after the equipment replacement fund, but before the commuter parking lot fund.
Oh, a tab.
Correct.
A land acquisition tab.
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you. Okay, so then, my motion was on the equipment replacement fund, correct? Want to take her? Thank you. So there was a motion and a second on the equipment replacement fund? Did you have a second? Okay.
And no opposition?
Okay, and no opposition, then motion carried. Next item is the commuter parking lot fund. Any questions on the commuter parking lot fund? Alderman Police?
Jeff, you've got one expanded here, that's only, so basically, this is just in case of a four-inch snowfall or?
Correct, I mean, for an example this year.
It's not like, if we get an inch, our guys are still going to do it.
Correct, the idea behind this is, in heavy snowfalls, to keep that lot open when commuters first get there in the morning, which is what it's expected. We have a contractor help us do that, so then our crew can concentrate on the streets and roads, and we can kind of, you know, make sure we accommodate the commuters, but keep the roads clear at the same time. So when it's heavy snow, we would call on the help, but normal circumstances, we wouldn't.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Let me salt in too, or is that still our responsibility?
I defer to Mr. Kramer on that one.
Mr. Kramer?
It depends on the storm. More than likely, the city staff will probably salt, we already pay for our salts, get a good quality price for our salts, so it'd be cheaper for us to do it than buy it ultimately from somebody else.
Good, thank you.
Alderman Ray Wesley?
Take it with this thirty-five thousand that supplies that they will use all their own equipment, and if the snow has to be removed off the site and so forth, correct?
Correct, they would not use any city equipment, unless city staff was doing the work, there would be no non-city staff using city equipment in this removal. Basically, we just ran into a problem this last large snowstorm, where we couldn't keep up with the streets and clear the metro lot, so it gave us the idea, if we get into that scenario again, we have the, a contractor set up in our bullpen that we can call up and say, we need you to come and do the RTA lot, so we can stay focused on streets.
What was about part of that you paid for the contractor for the, for the commuter lot?
For the two days we used him in this last storm, it was just under sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, I think this is why we're spending the money for, to make sure we have that done. I'd like to go to another line if I could.
Sure.
Professional services? Fifteen thousand? Want to go into details what that is? Anthony? I got the name right.
Anthony?
Yes, that includes, as we mentioned earlier, Alderman.
Pardon me?
That includes the train station cleaning that was mentioned earlier, any electrical and plumbing work that needs to be done in the building.
So that would be including repairing the doors and vandalism, and whatever else may be done at that train station, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to ask this, this is a pepe with me, because we spent a lot of money on that train station, and I don't, I want to make sure that it stays clean, and I want to make sure that we keep up on it. Now, I don't know how much our contract is with the cleaning service or anything else, but if we need to put more money in there to make sure that this stays clean, and to keep up on it, I'm willing to do that. And is this going to be enough, what you're saying, here? I don't want to hear that, well, you know, let's, let's look, I know we want to say, get the best bang for our buck too, but I want to make sure it stays clean too. So is that going to be enough to make sure that our contracts for cleaning and everything else is going to be enough? That's a lot of money that we spent on that train station, I just want to make sure that. I don't know what the average is, I know there've been some vandalism over there, and how long has that train station been up? A year?
Correct.
So how much have we spent for repairs and labor and everything else to repair whatever's been damaged up to date? Go ahead.
Anthony, please?
We currently contract out at eight hundred dollars a month for, there'll be ninety-six-hundred dollars projected for 2011, and they carry, they handle all the cleaning and whatnot for the, for the station.
But the question was, how much, how much have we paid for the vandalism that's been there, the doors to be replaced, to date? I don't think it's, I don't think you're going to see it there.
Do you defer to Mr. Forrest on that one?
Because it's been a year, and I know it was new, but there've been some stuff done.
Anthony was correct, as far as the cleaning contract, it's eight hundred dollars a month. So currently, the company that we're under contract to, that's ninety-six-hundred dollars a year for the cleaning services. I have gotten another bid on the cleaning services, because I know we've spoken about this a few times, and I'm waiting for one more bid to come in, so that we can either consider changing cleaning services. I will tell you that the one bid that I did get is about a thousand dollars a year more than the current contract, and I am waiting for one more bid to come in. And as far as what we've spent already on repairs to the train station, it's been somewhere between seventeen hundred and two thousand dollars. We've had to replace a door closer, I guess, that was broken. We've had to do some painting and some other miscellaneous small repairs to it.
Alderman Ray Wesley?
In return, what you just said, that would be a difference of two thousand dollars from a year that we just had open. Now, that's my concern. You follow what I'm saying? Because it's only been a year, and it's all new. As things are going here, things are going to break more. Hopefully, we don't have the damage and stuff, but that's only two thousand dollars to give you a wiggle room here, compared what you have already. Because you, I'm just adding a thousand dollars in with extra, if you wanted an extra cleaning service, and you said you spent about twenty-four hundred dollars in repairs. You follow what I'm saying on that?
Yeah, well, we've spent under two thousand on repairs. Yeah, the station's been open about fifteen months. Unfortunately, we have little control. Most of the damage that's been done to the building that's had to be repaired has been due to kind of vandalism, I suppose we could say. I'm just looking, I'm sorry, how much did you say we were putting in for? Yeah.
Madam Chairman, I'm not, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I just want to make sure that we're going to have enough money there. And, I mean, is the landscaping coming out of this too, to upkeep the landscaping, or is that come under maintenance and grounds of thirty-five hundred dollars? And John, you, John Forrest, want to go back to that question of saying if there's enough?
Yeah, I would think that we've got enough put aside. I wouldn't expect there to be any large-scale repairs needed on the train station as of yet.
Well, how about the cameras? Does it come out of the police fund for the cameras in there, or does that come out of that one too? If the repairs of cameras in the train station?
I would have to ask the chief on that.
Cover that out of the police department's side, and/or if there's a major item, we can do it out of IT.
Okay, thank you. And if you, could I go to Mr. John Kramer?
John and I worked on this budget together. Basically, we added some, a few line items, that thirty-nine thousand that you see under maintenance, equipment and grounds, that covers the thirty-five thousand dollars that we just talked about for snow removal, the expanded item, plus there's a little bit built into that for other contractual items for maintenance and grounds, i.e. the irrigation system that's there, contractually, that has to be gone through at the end of the season, plus in the beginning of the year, it has to have the RPZ inspected. We've got some money set aside additionally to the professional services underneath there, outside of the cleaning amount, that would cover us for anything, plus we added under the, so commodities category, maintenance, equipment and grounds, where there previously was nothing identified, we added thirty-five hundred dollars there. So that covers us for our own staff doing maintenance to the building, painting, electrical outlet change outs, light bulbs, tile replacement, touch-ups on various woodwork, things like that.
I'm also looking at, for march and flowers and bushes to be replaced, that comes out of that thirty-five hundred, correct?
Correct.
Okay, one more question, madam?
Yes.